Good evening, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll please.
Lou Harding.
Here.
Saunders.
Here.
Rhodes.
Here.
Spinks.
Here.
Cochee.
Here.
Mizak.
Here.
Janutus.
Here.
Uh, possibly you have the minutes of the work session of January twenty-second, twenty-nineteen. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Mizak, second by Rhodes. Call the roll.
Lou Harding.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of January twenty-second, twenty-nineteen. Any corrections, changes to that? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Janutus, second by Spinks. Call the roll please.
Lou Harding.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-six seventy-nine nineteen. We're on the office.
Ordinance number ninety-seven, ninety-six seventy-nine nineteen. Amending ordinance number eighty forty-four oh eight, authorizing the finance director to continue the rebate program for Bedford residents registering to become members of the Bedford Heights Community Center and declaring an emergency.
And motion for suspension. Mizak, second by Rhodes. Call the roll please.
Lou Harding.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Motion for third and final. It's Spinks, second by Lou Harding.
Yeah, in this ordinance, all we were doing is putting an expiration date on when a request for the reimbursement can occur. As it stands right now, when we proposed it in the ordinance, we didn't have one earlier, it would be the end of your term of membership. So by that time, we would expect that you would request a reimbursement for that membership for that year. We've had some requests that came in a couple of years later, it's a little bit old, so at this point, we put a little time period that we want to request that. In most cases, it's one year.
Thank you. Call the roll please.
Lou Harding.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-six sixty-six-nine nineteen. Amending ordinance number seventy-one thirty-nine-nine-nine-nine regarding section nineteen forty-nine thirteen entitled Historic Downtown Business District, certified ordinances of the city of Bedford and declaring an emergency. We would like to put that on second reading, motion for such. By Rhodes, second by Saunders. Call the roll please.
Lou Harding.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Janutus.
Uh, reports, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a couple items tonight. Uh, first, for those of you that were not able to attend last week's State of the City, we did work to coordinate that event to be taped, so the video of that event is on our website. So if you missed it, feel free to visit there. You can see all the things happening. We did put in for our annual recycle grant that we submitted. I don't want to change ourselves, but we've been pretty, if it's nine years ago, we received the grant. That was due last week, and we did put in for funding to cover both of the shred days again this year. Um, we're looking at possibly installing decorative recycling containers throughout the historic district and then utilizing the rest of the funding with educational materials that we can pass out during some of our events, and those specifically geared towards the children. So hopefully, we are successful with that project. Excuse me, speaking of projects, we are moving forward with our quote-unquote kickoff meeting for our sign initiative. We have established a small working committee, and that committee is going to be meeting with Guide Studio and going through the process of potentially working to design some of our potential new gateway signs, secondary signs, as well as signage and wayfinding signs for the historic district, parks, and some of our other areas of town that we want to highlight. Most likely, this is... All right. Win! So, sorry about that. Again, this is going to be most likely a couple-year initiative, because we most, the plan is to utilize grant funding to pay for the signs, but we want to get this process started now. So once we are in agreement that we like the designs and have an idea of what we want to do, those grant applications will be coming due, and we'll be ready to add them. So that kickoff meeting is next week. And speaking of grants, we did receive notification, we did, we put in last year for, the county offers a fifty-fifty match grant for county roads. Um, there are some part of us that believe that the county should be covering all the cost of these streets. However, Forbes is a county roadway. However, half is in Bedford and half is in Oakwood. So we did have some unofficial conversations with Oakwood representatives, and they were in favor of submitting an application last year, which we did. We put that application in in the fall. That project is roughly about three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars to repay Forbes Road. It's in poor condition, it needs to be addressed. A lot of truck traffic comes down there, creates ripples in the street. So sooner or later, we're going to need to address it. Our cost actually comes to about, or our percentage is about sixty percent, whereas Oakwood, their property line equates to about forty percent of that roadway. We were successful in the grant, the county did notify us that they would cover upwards close to two-hundred-thousand dollars of that resurfacing, and then we would split the difference with Oakwood. We just received that notification, it sounds like a really good project, project that we'll most likely move forward with. However, we just need to look at some of the financials as far as if we're going to take those funds out of our annual road resurfacing project, because we did allocate about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for various roads in town. If we're going to have to contribute anywhere from eighty to a hundred, a hundred-and-ten-thousand for Forbes, it's going to reduce the other streets that we're going to be able to do. So we need to take a look at that and figure out the best approach. Obviously, it's a good thing, especially if we can confirm that Oakwood is on board as well. You know, when you get all three entities in there, you know, and you get that street redone, it could be a definite win. So kudos to the staff that worked to put that application together. Ed of the board.
Thank you. Mr. Law Director. Just like to thank you all for coming. Got no report, so have a good night. I can't say a lot of things.
Uh, just a comment on our new website, it's looking really good. I don't know if Mike has mentioned that earlier, the city did implement the new website.
Good job.
And it does look very nice. And then taking advantage of that, in my tax department, we reconfigured everything to make it easier to read, easier to find things, easier to do the tax return online. And in doing so, if you click on it, we have a new program this year. People have to register, get a PIN number. Uh, we also have a webinar that was done by Tracy in our department. Uh, we have her talking about how to do a simple return. And you can take that, and there's also examples of how to do the complex confirmed written documentation and PowerPoint in regards to that too, and soon maybe you'll have the video. Video takes a while to look at, though, that's the only issue. But if you take a look at the short version, which is the simple way of doing it online that Tracy did, you can actually see where you would check up all the boxes for anything other than a W-two, and you'll be able to work with that pretty easily. We've had people already utilizing the system, did pretty well. A couple of hiccups with people with questions on it, and we'll be able to answer those for them. So so far, so good, but it's early and it's easy yet, and I'm assuming that's going to pick up readily. But keep in mind, there is instructions online to help you with that if you get bogged on it, like you're working on it. Ed of the board.
Thank you. Mr. Lou Harding.
Thank you, Mayor. Just got one comment too. For Mike, we have the Northfield Bridge, since the snow's melted, there's a ton of debris and bottles and you name it, needs to be picked up while it's still clear out. Give him something to work on that would help that area. I've noticed that coming here this evening, there's a bunch of industry on top of the sidewalks. And just have a couple sad notes to report that I'm sure to find out most people have heard, Jerry Kern, who was a volunteer, police officer, detective, Baylord, over forty years passed away last week. And his viewing is Thursday down here at Ramito's from two to seven. And also Gary Barnes, Barnes Roofing, passed away. He was pretty ill with some cancer. And his viewing is at Gospel House on Friday. I don't know the times, you have to look it up, but I know it's at the Gospel House on Friday.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Saunders.
All right. First thing, I made the announcement that the Historical Society's reverse raffle is on March sixteenth. Tickets are available already, so buy them up quick, because they're going to sell out. So it's one of their major fundraisers of the year, and hopefully, we can get them to sell out. There's only a hundred-and-fifty tickets, so your chances of winning are reasonable. So, and I know people say I win every year, but that's not the point. In any case, you can buy them from any Historical Society member or the trustees, I believe they have them too, so. But it does go to a good cause. Forbes Road, do you know if the county's going to use high-density asphalt on there because of the heavy truckload that are on that road, because otherwise, it'll run out? They have to use the heavier mix in order to be able to keep it, because I know back when we did the intersection at Forbes and Broadway, I just happened to be working on that project back then. The traffic back then was sixty percent trucks. So those trucks can do a heck of a load damage to the roadway itself, and I would highly recommend that they replace the intersection at Northfield and Forbes with concrete as opposed to asphalt, so you don't get it to rumble up, similar to the bus pads and so forth that go in on a lot of the roads where RTA has to start and go at different bus stops that have high volume. But it would be worth looking into and see if we can get that done, so that we don't have to worry about it rumbling up again, like Northfield Road is. I don't know if anybody's driven down Northfield Road to the north. That curb lane, of course, has always been bad. Now, the garbage trucks who pretty much destroyed that curb lane are running in the middle lane, and they're starting to rumple that up too. So trucks can do a heck of a lot of damage. So we need to see if we can get the county to put a couple extra bucks into the quality of the asphalt that's going in there. Next question is at Johnson and Woodrow, the city dug up two of the intersection, two of the corners on the intersections over there. Were those, was that a water main break, or were they finally fixing the catch basins in that area that never seemed to drain? You know offhand?
I believe it was a catch basin, I don't believe it was a break there.
Okay, that's what I was hoping, because those catch basins for years have never really functioned properly, and since they dug up both sides, I figured maybe that's what it was. So I got asked that question, and I didn't know, because I hadn't been up there because of the weather either, so. And on the last note, I know a number of people in January were a little upset that the city of Bedford raised their sewer rates by four percent. But just a point of note, Regional Sewer has now passed a nine-percent annual sewer rate increase, which will begin in 2022 and go through 2027. So that's what Regional Sewer has to look forward to for five years, coming up in a couple of years. However, this year, as of January first, Regional Sewer put in a six-point-five-percent rate hike. Now, they're higher than we are now, so, but that's only part of it. They also put in a twenty-eight-percent rate hike for their base rate, which is your minimum. So anytime somebody complains about our four percent, and we looked at it, reviewed it, and reviewed it, and we're only using what we have to as a bare minimum, be thankful you're not in Regional Sewer, because Regional Sewer on top of all of that has anywhere from a twelve to a sixteen-dollar stormwater management fee on top of your bill too. So I think we're getting a bargain for what we've got here, and we still run our own systems. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rhodes.
Hello, everyone, thank you for coming. Just have some mediating announcements, Bedford Downtown Alliance announcements. Chocolate Walk, I have tickets. You should buy some, we have thirty businesses, thirty-plus businesses that will be participating. I need you to get thirty pieces of chocolate, or alcoholic drinks, I know that there's at least two. Ten dollars a ticket. If you're not going to be available on the sixteenth, but you'd still like to consider supporting Bedford Downtown Alliance, we are doing sponsored tickets, so that you can buy tickets that we will then gift to people that have been helping the Downtown Alliance. So it's a great way to help us sell our tickets, as well as help some of the people that have helped us have a little treat themselves. I did want to announce that we have a downtown cleanup scheduled for February fifteenth, that'll be at five PM Friday afternoon or Friday evening in downtown Bedford. If you're interested in doing a little cleanup volunteer work, we'd appreciate the help. We also have gotten our memberships up and running on our website. The website's located at BedfordDowntown.org. Remember, that's two D's. So if you're interested again in helping support the Bedford Downtown Alliance and our goal of revitalizing our downtown area, you can go online and become a member. Different membership levels have different perks, so we hope that you'll be willing to help support us. And that would be all for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks.
Saunders kind of stole a little bit of my information I was going to give tonight, but I'm the representative for the council for the Bedford Historical Society, among the board trustees, and I'm the vice president. So I'm going to, he stole some of my stuff. But proud to announce that our winter break is over, the two thousand and nineteenth season is going to start tomorrow. So the hours will be, Tuesday and Thursday will be from ten AM to four PM. Wednesdays will be from two PM to eight PM. And then on the second Saturdays of each month, from ten AM to two PM. Additional hours will be posted for the summertime. I did ask our curator, Miss Debbie Grubbs, to come tonight to talk about, she has the tickets for our reverse raffle and silent auction. Will be at Casabla, oh, Casabla, at Casabella, Boney Area, on the sixteenth. This is a very, very important event for our Historical Society. And there's a bunch of stuff coming up. March second, we will have a Dr. Seuss birthday celebration, the old church, a lot of stuff I'm going to save some for Debbie to get up and tell you all about, but a lot of really, really neat stuff going on at our Historical Society coming up. Our new director, Elmer, is doing a great job. We've got a lot of really good things going on, happening down there. Also, Paul always liked to announce when it's like National Squirrels Day and different things like that. Well, today is actually two very special days. February fourth is National World Cancer Day. And with the passing of Gary Barnes, he fought a very long battle for that and was very courageous in it. My husband is coming up on February eleventh, will be six years cancer-free. You know, it's a good thing, it's a good one. That's a very good celebration to have, he just celebrated another birthday, so this is right over that birthday celebration, this is a huge one. It's also today, February fourth, is Rosa Parks Day. It's recognized in California and here in the state of Ohio. A lot of people don't know that, but they do a lot of stuff in California, not as much here, I think that's very important. And again, condolences go to Gary Barnes's family, his daughters and grandchildren, and to Jerry and Janet Kearns' family. We belong to the favorable group with Jerry and Janet Kearns, and we had a lot of fun for many years with them. End of report.
Thank you. Mrs. Mizak.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we're at the, most is stealing, we're at the borrowing of thoughts night tonight. I too would like to send out my condolences to the Kearns and Gary Barnes's family. I met his daughter Sears a couple of years back, and he had a lovely family. And when you called Gary, no matter what the weather was, it was a challenge for him, and he was right at your door, taking care of business. There was one other person I'd like to offer our sympathies to also, and he's been gone maybe three weeks now, but it was our former superintendent of the school, Marty Matsko's husband, Dwight. He used to work, I worked for him at the Southern, and kind of lost office in Northfield, but as far as being close to Bedford, like Marty was, he was right with her and right at her side for every function you could think of, he was right there. And that's the thing on my little paper here, we had to say to the city last Wednesday, of course, didn't choose the day, but we did choose the day, but we didn't choose the weather. However, I want to thank everybody who did turn out. A lot of the merchants were there, the Auto Mile Association was there, and some of the dealers, and various other groups, and people. The luncheon was very good, and thank you to Maple Heights Caterers, and thank you very much to Sister Regina, and the lady that let us fill up the luggage, she was there. Large staff. I want to give a thank you to the Automobile, Auto Mile Association. We had, many years ago, we did, we used to have breakfasts for the Auto Mile on Thursday, I think this still happens, Mr. Long. And they were having trouble with cars being stolen off their lives. And we were talking about it, and we went and do it a couple of times, and the suggestions came up about separate cameras on the properties. Well, some of them did it, some of them didn't do it, but then all of a sudden, this year we were, the Auto Mile Association was very generous to the city once again, and agreed to pay for these cameras for all their, I believe, like, most of the dealerships in the area that they were concerned about. So I want to say thank you to them for their generosity. Not only do they help us there, they've helped us with our canines, and they've helped us with various other things. We're not shy, we can give them some. We can give them money for the cars, yes, but in turn, come back and support our city, and that is a big thank you from me, and I'm sure the city too. And lastly, like Sandy says, she always thinks I have something to say, not only was there two things for today, in the morning I don't listen too much to the news, well, I just happened to turn it on, and I feel up to each other and just go, give them a high five, today's high five, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Janutus.
Thank you. Well, it's kind of reflective time of the year, and it's when we make our New Year's resolutions, and all the things we're going to not do anymore and whatnot. With all this talk of global warming, I'm glad it finally got so cold, so we did have winter after all, and I'm glad it only lasted a couple of days, so I'm ready for spring, I don't know about you. But I have to say, and this has to do with the State of the City address the other day, I don't know how many of you had the good fortune to be able to see it. When I started on this job, you know, it's been over five years now, but seems like it was just yesterday, because I tell you, there's a lot going on in the city that I had no idea about. I mean, I've lived here for sixty-six years, and I had no idea what was going on around me. Whenever I flushed the toilet, I just thought it was magic. I didn't realize that it's actually traveling fifty-five miles of ancient pipes to get where it has to go. So just all these little things, I mean, it's just amazing what goes on in the city, and all the details that have to happen to make it run. It's just, it's astounding, and it's been quite a learning experience. When I started here, this city was really in a state of shock. It lost the city manager, the law director, the building commissioner, there were TV cameras outside the building every day, workers were sneaking out the back door to get in their car, and this city was really in a state of shock. Multi-million dollar shortfall, and we've been running a million-dollar deficit every year thus far. But I just want to urge you all to take a moment to look at the state of the, the city's state of the city address, and there's no way you couldn't be impressed by what has been accomplished from that time. It's just a steady stream of positive accomplishments by the administration of the city, and I have to congratulate our mayor and especially our city manager for all that he's been able to accomplish in these past so many years. And again, I urge you all to take a look at the State of the City address, because it's very impressive. The city of Bedford has come a long way in the last few years.
Thank you. Thank you, Willie. Paul did all my thank yous for the State of the City, so thank you for, thank you. But again, I want to thank everybody that did come out on such a record-breaking cold day to listen to us. We had a full house, it was pretty neat that all the people showed up. And we had a good message. Like we said, since two thousand and eight, when the big recession hit, we've been going downhill every year, and struggled every year, just to save people's jobs, save city services, and we got through it without laying anybody off, and so finally, this year, we hit bottom and we're moving forward. So a lot of positive stuff happening in this city, and not just gonna happen, but is happening. And I'm just real excited to be here at this, at this point in time. The business Simon's Supermarket will open. I know their sign's been up there for a couple of years. He has purchased the equipment for the inside, the coolers and all that, so he is making the effort to open. And Zelia Corporation is going to start production, so they're going to be hiring people, they're looking at a new line of medications, that'll be IV type, so they'll also be using a lot of water, which helps us. The dealership at Rockside in Northfield, that will be built. So like I said, there's many, many good things, and small things happening too. So it's just a good time, and I'm happy to be where I'm at here today to work with these people every day, and they, they do a tremendous job, our administration's second to none. And what these guys do with what we have available, they do a terrific job. And in case you haven't heard, we will now be known as Hollywood Bedford. We're going to have a movie studio in town, a legitimate, big-time movie studio. where they'll film movies, TV shows, commercials, whatever. It will be built on the site of the former US Bank Mortgage Building, which is off of Rockside Road. Most people think that's part of Maple Heights, but no, it's ours. So it's pretty cool, we'll have, might have some celebrities in town, who knows? So it's, they're gonna be ready to build, there'll be a huge soundstage, and it's exciting what they're gonna do there, so. So hopefully they'll spin some side businesses off of that. I think we'll be looking to get some more restaurants in town, because they're gonna be need net for people. It's just a good thing, what's happening, it's so nice to talk about the positives that are happening in this town, and that there's people up here that are behind it and pushing some of our overnight successes that have taken years. And finally, they're gonna, they're gonna come out, so stay tuned. Didn't take off, I did. And one other sad note, been a rough month for deaths around here. Former city manager Bill Schuchert, way back in the seventies, he passed away. And I told this to Mike already, but he's the smartest city manager we ever had. He hired me in the fire department. But we wish his family condolences, and it was good to see his family. Even when he moved on to Shaker Heights and other cities where he was sitting, but his family stayed here in Bedford for all those years, so that was a, he was a good guy. And Mike, you're doing a good job.
Bunket for Niall in 2019.
All right, let's get to business. Ordinance number ninety-six seventy-two dash nineteen.
Authorizing all actions necessary to accept a grant from NOPEC for the 2019 Energize Community Grant Program, declaring an emergency.
Have a motion for suspension, Spinks, second by Fluharty, call the roll.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Nezak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Rhodes, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is again, another grant that we were receiving from NOPEC. This is right around forty, forty-five thousand dollars for this year. Similar to the grant that we received last year that we use for various energy improvements. This grant, we do not have earmarked for a specific project right now. If you recall, a few months back, we entered into an agreement with Gardner, and Gardner's going to, actually they started, they started a couple of weeks ago. They are doing what they refer to as an investment-grade audit of all of the city's facilities, and then they put together a study, and we did this, last time we did this was about twelve years ago. They'll put together a study and recommendations on various types of improvements that can be made as far as energy savings, energy improvements. It's all detailed down to when your payback period is. Obviously, there's some things that we utilize, if it's pumps down at the wastewater plant, they might have like a two-year payback based on how efficient it runs. And then there's other things that might have a twenty-year payback. Well, obviously, those aren't the improvements that, you know, we'd like to really focus on the ones where we can have cost savings much sooner. What we're going to utilize these NOPEC dollars for is those energy improvements once we complete that investment-grade audit. And we'll share those recommendations with council in the coming months.
Thank you. Call the roll first.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Nezak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-six seventy-three dash nineteen.
An ordinance to approve and adopt a solid waste management plan for the Cairo County Solid Waste Management District, declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Nezak, second by Rhodes, call the roll.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Nezak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Spinks, second by Janutis.
Thanks, Mayor. This is basically just the, we're accepting the ratification of the Cairo County Solid Waste District Management Plan. They're required to put this plan together. The plan actually spans from 2019 to 2033. So we're basically accepting what their plan entails. We do work with the Solid Waste District on a handful of items. They're a resource for the city, and as I mentioned earlier, this is one of the entities, this is the entity that we apply to for the recycling grant. It's one of the small things that they do do.
Thank you. Call the roll first.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Nezak?
Yes.
James? Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-six seventy-four dash nineteen.
Amending ordinance number ninety-six sixty-two dash nineteen, rezoning the one-seven-eight-zero-zero Broadway LLC parcels, numbers eight-one-two-oh-one-zero-one-five, eight-one-two-zero-one-zero-one-six, and eight-one-two-zero-one-zero-seven, located at Sector, at Sector Drive, from R2 to B2A, classification, declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension, Spinks, second by Fluharty. Can you talk about the next two?
Sure. The next two ordinance, this one and the one after it, is regarding the property owned by Mazda of Bedford, both at eleven Broadway, as well as across the street. They're moving forward with the sale of that property. Last year, we went ahead and consolidated, for instance, where their current dealership is at eleven Broadway. It was a handful of parcels. What we did is we worked with them, they submitted that. It was consolidated into one parcel that was recorded down at the county. This is, this one piece of ordinance is recognizing that as well. And then the other piece is changing the name, because they had closed on the property across the street, and were identifying that as going from Quay to seventeen-eight-hundred Broadway LLC. The same owner purchased or is purchasing, I forgot what, is purchasing eleven Broadway and across the street. So this is a good deal, it's a good deal to move forward, get this cleaned up to satisfy the language for the new buyer, and then they can then focus, when I refer to them, Mazda, focus on the demolition and construction of the new dealership up at Rockside Road.
Thank you. Call the roll first.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Nezak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-six seventy-five dash nineteen. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of us. Third and final. I mean, did the, Rhodes, second by Saunders. That's why you're here.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Nezak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance number ninety-six seventy-five dash nineteen.
Rezoning permanent parcel number eight-eleven-zero-one-zero-eight-six, owned by Quay Inc., located at eleven Broadway, described here in from R2 to B2A classification, and approving the consolidation of several parcels, Michael referred to before, and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension, Saunders, second by Rhodes, call the roll.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Nezak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Mike explained that. Call the roll first.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Nezak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Now we come to the hearing of citizens, if you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, and your comment.
I'm Debbie Grove, I live at two sixty Deppeling, and I'm here for the Bedford Historical Society. We are starting our new 2019 season, we're opening this week. Our hours have changed a bit. We're open on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays now, so that we're clustered in the week. And we have Saturday hours once a month, and we'll also have extended hours on, during the summertime and during the festival season. And if anyone wants a tour or a group, we can make us special accommodations, just contact us. I also wanted to mention the reverse raffle that is coming up on March sixteenth. This is a major event for the society, I do have tickets available tonight. And there's also when any, when we're open at the museum, we'll have tickets there to buy. Our, our theme is Fly Me to the Moon, and people who come are encouraged to dress to the theme if they wish, and whether you want to dress as Sinatra or as Star Trek, you can take it any way you want. We also have a number of other events that will be coming up. As Sandy mentioned, on March second, we have the Dr. Seuss Birthday, that is a free event for families, and it will be in the community room in the church on the square. So this will be an unveiling of the renovations of the community.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Terry Sargatzold, I live at ninety-six-two Gray Avenue, Bedford. First of all, I want to really commend the fire department for taking care of that fire on Tuesday at three o'clock in the morning. Great job. But I was riding my bicycle today in Walmore, and I've noticed that a lot of the sidewalks are blocked, especially on Broadway. I wasn't gonna say anything until this young lady was pushing a carriage around, I was going south on Broadway, and she had to go into the street, and this guy pulls up and screams and yells at her, beats his horn, to get the hell off the road, and there was no place for her to go. What is an ordinance for removing all these big snow piles on our sidewalks?
It's for the property owner to move, clear the sidewalks.
I mean, isn't there some kind of recourse that we can get to ask them? So I mean, even in front of Mazda, all the stones and everything with that lady, she lives in Maple Heights and she walks into Bedford. She goes, she has a hard time even pushing her carriage in front of the Mazda, because it's just a mess like Norfield Road sidewalks. What is our recourse on this?
We can notify them.
Yeah, we can notify the property owners to do that. Obviously, we try to work with them to, as much as possible, as far as clearing their locks. I will say typically, when you're in the middle of winter, or when that, when you get that first day and that snowfall melts, of course, things look a mess, you see the busted-up road, you see pieces, things that have, we haven't been able to get out and clean up. Throughout the year, those things are typically addressed. When that snow's gone, that's when our crews are out making repairs to the road, the street sweeper is out addressing those items, and then you also have property owners looking to clean that up. Typically, when that snow first melts and you get that warm day, things don't work great. There's no doubt about it.
Piles of snow or blocked sidewalks. I mean, when I did it, my sidewalks are cleared from one end of the street to the other. And there are school kids that walk down, I mean, don't they have the responsibility to be like, kind of like?
They should be cleared, yeah.
I mean, that poor young lady was crying, and I just felt really bad.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Chris Lee, ninety-seven things. Is there any way anybody from the city can put a word out to the Michaels Corporation to keep our activities open? Even if it's a Michaels? I know already, you didn't try yet.
They've been in conversations. It's a corporate decision, yes, to close it, the corporate decision.
I know, but if the city kind of bugged them, would they rethink that maybe the Bedford store is worth keeping open?
We could try to have a conversation, and we've had some conversation. Just shooting straight like I always do, I wouldn't expect it.
But you could try, right?
We'll try.
We've heard a lot about that store, so.
I bet.
Every second question, but in regards to what the gentleman was saying about the lady pushing the car into the street. When it was real cold last week, week before, I was going up Broadway and a guy was out running. I don't know why anybody would run in that kind of cold, I guess they do. But he was running in the street in front of the cemetery, because cemetery sidewalks weren't shovel. Perhaps you might notify the owner of those that. But anyways, I have a recycling question. When, when we recycle newspaper, does the city get paid for that?
Comes off of our tonnage. We pay our trash per ton, so as far as recycling, it comes off of that. So the less tonnage that we get, obviously, the less our bill's going to be. So paper would go towards recycling. So we don't get paid for it, but we theoretically could lower our tonnage, our overall tonnage, on how we build.
Because it's not going to rub.
Correct.
And the only reason I ask is because I used to give papers to the school. My understanding was that they got paid for those. And now the school isn't there anymore, but the, but the collection bins are still there. And I thought, well, rather than taking them up there and putting them in the collection bins, I'll put them in the regular rub. But if somebody's still getting paid for it, I'll continue to take them up there.
Yeah, like for, yeah, we don't actually get paid at all, it all centers around our tonnage and trying to reduce that. I know we talked a little bit about the recycling issue earlier, and, you know, it's an issue. I mean, recycling, it's, it stems from, some people just throw whatever, it's just an extra can, just throw things in there. And the recycling industry and a lot of these trash collection companies, they're really taking a huge hit on it, because they're not able to do it, because what they're receiving as far as recycled material is contaminated. And then they, they can't pay for the amount of orders, they can't pay for a lot of items. And then if you really want to take it up to the top, China has chosen not to, China was the one that was always purchasing all of the recycled materials, and they were going to landfills, obviously, in China. It was a huge, huge industry, they backed off that. And all of the trash, trash companies and recycle companies have since, the cities and villages and entities that were up for renewal to renegotiate, the cost has spiked, because they know they're going to get, they're going to have significant charges to dispose of that, and to put it through the process of that recycling is done. We are in, we still have, Frank, I think we have three years left on that contract. We negotiated and signed a longer contract as part of our consortium, and we actually did have Kimball contact us, they contacted the law director, strongly requesting us to open the door and renegotiate, because they're losing. And our decision was, we're not going to renegotiate, that was part of the reason for signing that long extended piece. So do we, kind of digress a little bit, but we get, we save as far as the reduction of tonnage, but the point of it is, it's imperative that if you need some information on what you can recycle, or if you have questions about it, it's why we're trying to get some educational materials out there and why we've done it in the past, because we need, we need to, not only is it important to recycle, but it's imperative that we recycle the right way, because of what those companies are dealing with. If it's contaminated, it's off to the side.
And that was my other question, and I may have missed it, but was there something put out that had the correct recycle? Because at one point, it used to be if there was a symbol on the bottom of the container, it's recyclable. But then afterwards, no, that's not the case, it's not necessarily recyclable if the symbol is on there.
We, we did put something out, last year's recycle grant, we had some information that went out, and they went out to all the mailing addresses, as well as water bill recipients. And they went out to all the mailing addresses as well as water bill recipients. There was information on there. I think there might have been like another magnet or something that went on there. I believe there's still some out front, possibly, I can check. But we do periodically put that in our mini-newsletter. And we'll get something out, try to reach out to the staff that put that together and make sure we do send a refresher again.
Thank you.
I have an electronic copy, if you want me to email it to you. Jeff?
Okay, I'll get you my email.
Okay.
But don't sell it, huh?
Yeah, two cents I might make.
The last list, Sippa, five Archer Road. A couple of things to tell, but just, I guess, north of the top lot, because the house is six way back, they got four tires that sit on a tree lawn up there for ages. They've been sitting there a long time. And people are not putting their trash cans away. But I got a neighbor, a cross street from me, too, houses down. His trash cans were still out there hiding. He put them away either at the dark Friday night or Saturday.
And we just had a lengthy conversation about that, the last couple of meetings about the trash cans, different ways to handle it and raising the fines. We got some information from Garfield Heights where they charge a hundred and fifty dollars if you don't put them back. And you go to court and you pay court costs on top, which is about a hundred and eighty dollars. It might be a little extreme for us, but we are working on it. We have the police chief in to talk to him about different ways that we can have the police help us out on that, so. It's an issue we're looking at, so.
Okay. And also, Inspector Lyons Club, since we're selling, everybody's selling tickets, Inspector Lyons Club has a reverse, I mean, a reverse raffle, it's a scholarship drawing. It's the Bob Schroeder Memorial Scholarship drawing for our club. Tickets are twenty-five dollars. You draw a ticket every month, on the third, Thursday, Tuesday of the month. And the third prize is a hundred and twenty-five dollars, second is fifty, and third prize is twenty-five. So you can, you can win every month, you know. We actually have thirty-six chances over the year. So if anybody's interested, see myself or my lowest, low back there as tickets. That's the line.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Motion for adjournment by Spinks, second by Janutus, call roll.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Good night, and thanks for coming on.